I'll call the regular City Council meeting for the City of Dunsmere at 6:02 PM on June 6, 2019. We'll begin with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds. We will now move into roll calls.
Ms. Congresswoman George.
Here.
Ms. Congresswoman Ryan.
Present.
Ms. Congresswoman Chrysler.
Here.
Ms. Congresswoman Art.
Here.
And Ms. Congresswoman Thiel.
I am present. All right, thank you. We will now move into special presentations and announcements. Seeing none scheduled, we will move into public comments. Oh, sure. Mr. Anderson, would you like to go out and make an announcement?
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I have great news I wanted to announce to the public and the City Council. I think community, we are having a 2019 pool season.
Yay!
With the support of my district board as well as the community members, we have verified, we have eight qualified certified flag hats. We are planning the playing process. The pool is being drained as I speak. So I just want to let you know that we are going to have a season. We're going to open up the week of July 8th. And we may go longer than my plans are to go six, but we may go more than six, seven weeks depending on the weather, the season. But I wanted to acknowledge you guys for helping us. It's a hard call to make, but it stirred everybody up real good. And the positive that came out is that the pool was very important to our residents and our community here in Dunsmere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congress.
I'd like to say special thanks to Councilman for Chrysler who really helped a lot with recruitment towards the... Yay!
We're pleased he could contest, not me, but thank you.
But thank you, everyone. So thank you for that announcement, Mike. We'll now move into public comment. This is the time or schedule that we allow for residents or anyone in the public to come up and share with us anything that is not on the agenda or anything that is on the consent agenda. You will have three minutes if you would like to make a comment. All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment section and move us into council and staff member comments. So if there's any comments from the finance committee or any comments from any other business, this is the time to speak up. I will begin with Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mary. I would like to take this opportunity to stress the need for some rethinking, reorientation. I know that for the last several years, the Neighborhood Watch Committee has kind of foundered and was small and sparsely attended. But working together with the Disaster Preparance Committee, we're trying to work up this side of the equation by identifying block captains throughout the neighborhood and getting everyone signed up and doing all of that. We were planning on trying to get into a regular rhythm of having a meeting once a month. But once again, because of exist- yeah, existentities, whatever that word is, it was just canceled again because we're having a special meeting next Thursday. So I can understand the need for shuffling around, but this is like the second time. And the first time we shuffled twice within the same month. I'd like to be able to give the citizens a sense that if they want to get involved and help get ready for whatever might come down the line this summer, that we'd be able to have a place and a time and let them know. So I would just like to, without carrying you further here, suggest and hope that down the line we can work scheduling to identify a time that can be invited for the Neighborhood Watch. And I know right now I'm working with Sergeant Westine to see if we can come up with perhaps doing it at the high school next week. And the idea is that we're trying to identify block captains. We've identified block captains for certain blocks, but not for others. I've had a map printed up that really clearly states where all the different blocks are. We're going to be working to get that all up and also online. I just want to say that moving forward, hopefully we can have a time where we can have Neighborhood Watch and that comes.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Ryan, do you have any staff or council comments at this time?
Yeah. The Economic Development Committee finally met to go over a movie report with the committee. And we invited a representative from Travelers, whose own project, to come be with us. We're still in the getting stages. We're not anticipating completing their project in the summer of 2020. They just want summer for the down project. They're in the engineering stage. There's been a lot of work on that side. But we haven't seen a lot of construction or demolition yet. Just an update on that. The Finance Committee is in a free time of the City Council, last City Council meeting. And to use to work on budgets. It's quite exciting. I encourage everyone and the audience to attend those meetings as well. There's a lot to discuss. We have adopted several recommendations that they were going to implement and can be dealt with early in the address at the budget meeting next week. The only recommendation that would apply to John on the day was we moved to recommend that the city drop a line of TUT grants or TUT-funded projects. And just because it is a budgetary general fund tax, TUT is money coming in, money coming out, it's coming out of the general funds. It should just go back to its original name officially, which was Community Promotion Fund. So just call it verbally like that. It's more of a linguistics decision, but...
So I believe that's how we're going to go for tonight.
All right.
Is there any other comments? Councilmember Chrysler?
I got a thing that was pertaining to Moskew Falls and after reading that it I was a little bit more confused than when I started.
Sure.
It does, there's a few things on there that doesn't show me like where's Moskew Falls. So after reading it, I've got all the top hints of this. And then I'm trying to put Tom Heston's and Dave Whippersham together. It was a few years ago that Mr. Whippersham came up and we had a conversation. And he mentioned that he has no problem building a bridge, bringing a bridge, placing a bridge for us. That all had to do with negotiations to a same journey. So I think that maybe if I put two of these guys together, things that progress that the Trail Association has made at this time could be beneficial. So that's where I stand. I'm just trying, trying to push it along. But that's really the only thing I have to start with. That's it. So I do have an announcement that I'm dying to... I have to cancel the Railroad Day. I have to cancel the Soapbox Derby. We've been doing it for seven years. But the statement's been made that the chamber was unaware that there were many three, four, and five and six-year-olds racing. For seven years, they didn't know this, which infers that Big Dave took it upon himself to put these children in jeopardy, risk, all that. And that is not the truth. I got the money for insurance, but the chamber still decided that three, four, and five and six-year-olds were too young. This breaks my heart. This would have been the eighth year. I purchased 22 trophies that I don't get to give out. So if you guys really want to see your Soapbox Derby's again, I suggest that you talk to your chamber members. But again, it's been said that I did this on my own. I would not do that nor even think about it. I'm a chicken. I wouldn't do that. So I have to say to the registered, Madam Mary, thank you for letting me get that out.
Councilmember Art?
Three items. One is to recognize that today is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, June 6, 1944. And I hope that we do our business today and recess this evening's meeting in honor of all the veterans that have served our country. I watched a documentary last night and there were two survivors of the USS Arizona. And when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor, they successfully dropped a bomb through the top deck of the USS Arizona in the ammunition magazine. And the ammunition magazine exploded and instantly ended the life of 1,000 sailors. And so for all the bravery and heroism for our way of life, I hope that we remember all of our veterans in what we do tonight. The second item is to yet again congratulate Big Dave and the Dunsmere Rotary. I read the article, Little Libraries, Not Siski landscape. And I've actually seen the installation outside City Hall. And I saw a tourist use our little library. That's a very good thing.
Yay!
The third thing is to announce, I'm on full disclosure, I'm on the advisory committee to the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. We're very proud of the progress that's being made across the street in the Dunsmere Community Garden. We wanted to approximately double the amount of beds we had from 18 to 30. And this year, we aspire to install an irrigation system. As any of you that read the paper know, we were successful. We applied to the Macombe Foundation for a grant and we were awarded $12,000 to do those two projects.
Hey!
So very...
Madam Mary, on the back of Peter, I'd like to commend you and the Resource Center, the Rotary. They put on a community barbecue, top notch. I don't know if you noticed it, but that bounce house was, ooh! There were a lot of kids jumping and it rained 20 minutes before like God was crying on us and it stopped. And everybody still went out and had a good time. Steak sandwiches, hot dogs, barbecue.
Yay! All right, thank you. So I'll take this moment to a couple of updates similar to the Moskew Falls Trail. There has been a good discussion between the, my understanding so far, to update that on, is there's been a good discussion between the Union Pacific and the Trail Association. They are amicable to the project, which includes a bridge and a trail over on the U.P. side of the river. One of the things that is being discussed is a safety wall or a safety fencing between the U.P. line and the trail, which right now is going to be a pretty extensive build and triggers a certain level of environmental review under California laws. So we're kind of talking about how we can work better about that aspect. But as far as, as it's going forward in discussions that I've heard is that U.P. is in favor of putting the route in. They understand it is difficult and it is a danger. We're just working on the specifics of what that's going to look like. And so hopefully that will move forward here in the next couple of months. We have Big David, I reached out to Tom Hesselton about presenting his final proposal to the City of Dunsmere. But the Trail Association would like to get U.P. confirmation before they do that. So hopefully U.P. and the Trail Association can come to an agreement. And then we can hopefully see that project come through here and have a safe route to Moskew Falls. Because there were a lot of people looking morally vacant who went, quite a few people that could jump even to the northern part of Dunsmere. So hopefully that will happen.
Amen.
Yeah.
Well, once the project's done, I expect we will host an extremely large party.
Oh, yeah. I think a lot of people, I think a lot of people will be very happy for the, for the ending of that saga.
Madam Mary, while we're on the subject, I know every time this comes up, I'd like to kind of poke and put this back into the conversation. But as we're moving towards a sense of public buildings and facilities, we do have to start planning for parking and that type of thing. And so imagining that right now Hitchcock Falls and we, Quail Pool, whatever, we're going to be places to park. And so I just want to keep putting that a little on screen there.
And my understanding is Councilmember Chrysler and Councilmember Art have put something together for us to consider today.
Thank you.
So moving forward, the conversation about animal control and home enforcement continues. We are having that conversation. I know the Finance Committee is working very hard to appropriate the adequate funds for that type of position. The Human Society located in Mount Shasta is willing to discuss some solutions with us as well. So we are moving forward with conversations with that. And hopefully there can be some information coming out of our budget to appropriate the funds for a full time or half time.
Even parts.
Yeah, part-time or full-time, co-enforcement, animal control. So we're continuing that conversation and all of the players are at the table for that. Other than that, I just want to say that June is Pride Month. And so I would like to wish the City of Dunsmere a very good Pride Month. As a member of the LGBTQ community, it's really great to have a position where I am a little bit visible. This is probably less personally personal. But you know, to everybody out there, because from that community, who isn't from that community, there's been a lot of really great progress in acceptance and a lot of progress in understanding for that community. So hopefully everybody can enjoy their Pride Month in a safe, responsible manner. So thank you for the moment. We will now move to staff comments. Any more city manager? Nope?
No record.
We're good? Okay. We will now move on to item number six, which is approval of our minutes.
I take a motion that we approve the minutes from quote April 4th, 2019, May 16th, 2019, and May 20th, 2019, special.
All right, is there any amendments to any of the minutes for those three meetings?
No, only compliments to the note taker. Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, let's do some applause.
Yay! Julie! We're here to applaud that we today, but that's okay. That's a, that's a good problem to have. All right, seeing no amendments to those minutes, is there a second to the motion?
No second.
There's a second. So there's a motion on the table to approve item six A, B, and C, which approves the regular meeting minutes for April 4th, May 16th, and May 20th of 2019. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, bye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Our minutes are approved. Thank you, Neil Julie. We'll now move on to item number seven, which is the consent agenda discussion.
Well, I simply confess I missed the first few meetings, the first few minutes of tonight's meeting. But I did know that the header for tonight's agenda says closed session nine. And in fact, we do have closed session item 14.
Thank you. It is a typo, but I believe it was noticed when the closed session had been added. So I believe we are under Brown Act compliance. Please correct me if I'm wrong in that clarification, but I think that...
It was really, I know a number of people are interested in the closed session items. It was just already going for the...
My understanding is we are. So just for the public's information, we will be holding a closed session at the end. It is item 14-1, which is public employment appointment for the city manager. So we will be going into closed session to discuss the city manager recruitment process. We did hold some interviews with our finalists this past weekend, so we will be discussing that in closed session. So how that works is we will, we will close the public audience for that closed session. And then when we're done, we will reconvene. And if you do want to sit around and wait till the end of that, you're free to do that. And then we will adjourn for tonight. So thank you for that, for that item. So moving back into our consent agenda, so consent agenda tonight, we have eight approval closure in Use Screw Street between Dunsmere Avenue and Shasta Avenue each Thursday between 2:00 and 8:00 PM from July 11th through September 26th from the Dunsmere Farmers Market. Item B, receive and file letter of support from State Water Board Resource Control Board in support of Dunsmere request for financial assistance for the project from Prop 50 Chapter 6 C funds. Item number, or item letter C, approve a closure of Screw Street from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM for Rotary breakfast on June 8th, 2019 as part of Railroad Days. Item D, authorize mayor to execute letter of support for Assembly Bill 626 adding clarifying language to Government Code Section 1090 relative to public agencies' use of professional consultants. Letter E, authorize city manager to approve two days alcohol sales license for Chamber of Commerce for June 8th through June 9th of 2019 for Railroad Days. Letter F, approve closure of city parking lots June 7th through June 10th, use of Children's Park June 8th and June 9th. Closure of Klein Street, Shasta Avenue to Dunsmere Avenue, June 7th to June 9th. Another temporary closures as part of Railroad Days. And letter G, receive notice that Planning Commission approved a parcel map split at its April 10th, 2019 meeting for, quote, best choice in properties, APN 059-030-010 at 4221 Siskiyou Avenue in compliance with Dunsmere Municipal Code Section 16.08.070. Is there any discussion?
We're articulated.
You sound like you do this for a living.
I was waiting for you to go.
I can't say the word municipal. That's a really hard word to get up to.
I think a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
Items A through G?
Yes.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to adopt consent agenda items A through G as is discussed.
What comment and one question?
Sure.
The comment is, under the protocols in the agenda committee, this is exactly what needs to happen. Thank you. We need to make a decision in the interest of the public is which items are controversial or which are not.
Correct.
Two is for the time honored tradition of the check register appearing in our agenda. What did you guys do for check register O and G?
Do we have any checks?
Have we spent any money?
We've signed hundreds of them.
Yes, we signed a lot.
I mean, we apparently don't have any registration approved tonight. I know. That is kind of a very odd submission. That's kind of odd, but thank you. Yeah, if there's anything at any point that is controversial on consent, this would be the time to take it off.
I said nothing.
All right, great. So there's a motion on the table and a second. Any other comments on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agendas, items A through G as is, please signify by saying aye, bye, opposed, abstention. Motion carries. Consent is approved. We will now move into item number eight, public hearings. We have none scheduled at the moment. Moving into item number nine, old business, none scheduled. We will move into item 10, which is new business to item A, approve memorandum of understanding slash agreement to provide law enforcement services between County of Siskiyou and City of Dunsmere from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. Mayoral city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mary, members of the council. You have a current three years MOU with Siskiyou County for Law Enforcement, which is expiring and will in fact expire June 30th, 2019. An ad hoc committee met with representatives from the Sheriff's Office and Siskiyou County, my understanding was several meetings, and discussed extension of the MOU. What is proposed before you right now is an increase in the cost for the service and a reduction in the service hours. The initial request of the county sheriff when negotiations began was substantially higher than your current cost and substantially higher than the amount that the ad hoc committee is recommending before you this evening. What staff is recommending is that you do approve the memorandum of understanding agreement to provide law enforcement services between County of Siskiyou and City of Dunsmere for the next three years and authorize mayor and city manager to execute.
Thank you. And would the ad hoc committee, Councilmember Chrysler, Ryan, would you like to add anything to that staff report? I believe there is a request for you to continue.
Yes.
Would you like to discuss?
So on a financial note, that is completely correct. It was almost double the hourly rate. And the county has no flexibility with this according to their auditor. So what we see before us here is a reduction in hours from 20, an average of 20 hours per day to 14.5 roughly. We have assurances from Captain Hammon and Sergeant Ben that they will be able to contain the law enforcement standard with the reduced hours, though it may be difficult communication between city manager and our sergeant here who is going to be key. Not, within this memorandum, there's a lot of opportunity for Dunsmere to have input. And we discussed at great length, even though it's not a change to the memorandum because it's already in there, that we tend to communicate in regular intervals. So the sheriffs requested that we continue that ad hoc committee negotiated contract and meet quarterly to discuss the law enforcement needs of Dunsmere. And we recommend that the City Council extend the ad hoc committee for that quarterly meeting. The other thing that was promised to us is that when their personnel schedules can handle it, they're a little bit understaffed right now, that in addition to our wonderful police chief here, we will have a second in command, also inspiring sheriff's deputy, who will be assigned to Dunsmere for most of his hours. They can't accommodate that right now, but part of this committee would be to communicate at what point they'll be able to implement that in another.
You're thinking. Anything else?
None. Perfect.
Okay. Are there any questions or clarification that the council would like before we move into public comment? Seeing none?
Can I hear any new comments?
Yeah.
Just that we're currently working to try to identify who that second person's going to be, but I've got a couple of names and I'm flunking around.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I'd like to thank Ben publicly for everything he's done in this contract. He's committed to improving Dunsmere's law enforcement, not just community care data.
I kind of appreciate you doing the regular, still. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. All right, we will now open this up for public comment. This is the time for the public to come up and address the item at hand, which is the memorandum of understanding with the law enforcement services. You will have three minutes for public comment. And we do request that you give your name.
Well, then three minutes shouldn't start clock right in my...
No, I don't start the clock.
Really?
No, no, I mean you can...
Really? Oh, you're not going to wait?
No, no, I, I tell you to give your name and then I start your three minutes.
All right, Mario, Beano 5512 Dunsmere Avenue. Are we ready? Okay, I first got involved in my local city government over my car getting joyride and dealing with the sheriffs. Been involved in the city ever since. Tonight I was looking for some numbers from Mount Shasta. We all know how we like Mount Shasta comparisons, but the first is, City of Mount Shasta pays $900,000 and change for personnel, for dispatch, another 331, community services 78, for grand total of $1,337. They have 230.1 crimes per 100,000. This is from the City of Mount Shasta's current agenda. City of Dunsmere pays 416 for sheriff's contract, zero for its dispatch, and is budgeted right now currently $27,000 for a community services officer for a total of $443,000. We have 245 for FBI crime statistics from the Mount Shasta website, crimes per hundred. I'm not happy with this contract. This is a total mistake. There is no way we were happy with 20 hours a day, but understood it was a financial issue. 14.4, well work. And when the citizens find out this negotiation, we're going to have to look. Nothing is more important than police and fire. And it doesn't really matter how many tourists you bring in if we don't have the police coverage that we're needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment related to the memorandum of understanding that's on the table for law enforcement services? All right, seeing none, we will now close the public comment portion of this item and move into council discussion. Who would like to leave us off? Councilmember Art?
Well, I don't know if Resident Rubino is just taking a time out or he's leaving the meeting.
No, he's not.
But Mario and I served as mayor and vice mayor of this city from 2019. But Mario and I served as mayor and vice mayor of this city from two thousand eight to two thousand ten. And it was our painful duty because the city was in financial crisis to cut a complete deputy decision position out of the support we were receiving from the sheriff's office up to then. And we openly worried. What is this gonna do to public safety? And we want to hear from the community. Are we cutting fat? Are we cutting meat? What are we cutting? And I've spent countless hours with residents of Dunsmere. Oh, weed has its own police department. Mount Shasta has its own police department. We really need our own police department with not a virtual police chief, but a real police chief reporting to us. And for the time I've been in Dunsmere, I am convinced that we are not only ably served, but we are extraordinarily served by the sheriff's department. And we, the city of Dunsmere at this point, cannot afford a police department. So I thank the sheriff's department for their side of the negotiation on behalf of our citizens. I thank the committee for their side of the negotiation because it feels like it's not a commercial transaction. The safety needs, the community are really front and center.
Thank you.
I intend to go yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say in response to council public comment that it is of the utmost concern, um, cutting back law enforcement. There's only with closely working with the sheriff's office and discussing that, um, in the next few months from this hour and a change, um, we'll both, both sides of the city and sheriff's have been monitoring the effects of it, adjustments that need to be made. And it could be possible that fourteen and a half hours is not enough, and we're, we will welcome a renegotiation, um, if at that point it's determined that it's not enough. But that highlights that the difficulty we're in. I'd just like to, for everyone to know that we're currently with this reduced hours, eighty-eight thousand dollars deficit in our, our general fund. Now, there are ways to raise funds. I think we might have a good year, but the price raised in the post contract was a hundred and forty-four dollars per year from last year to this year. We can't afford that, uh, even with drastic measures. In three years, we will be faced with a similar price gap, and we will not have any hours left to cut. So I just want to encourage everyone to brainstorm and begin planning on how we're going to pay for this fundamental service, law enforcement, as well as the many other services we need and desire in Dunsmere. It's part of a bigger conversation. We have time based on the sheriff's department's, uh, willingness to work with us and, uh, problem solve our situation. But we have three years to foster prosperity and bring in more revenues so we can properly fund our enforcement.
Awesome. Congratulations.
I'd like to compliment councilmember Art. I thought I was following along the conversation. I thought we were gonna go down one path and you went down the other. I thought you did a good job there explaining. And I think that what people need to understand overall is, is that when you think you're gonna have your own police department, you're locking yourself up in, in terms of personal benefits for, for life for everybody that's involved. And in fact, the city, I guess, wasn't too long ago that we finally paid the last of the, the money out, but we haven't stopped yet.
We haven't stopped. We haven't stopped. Over twenty thousand dollars in this year's, next year's budget is allocated towards our police department from twenty plus years ago.
So anyway, I, I also wanted to comment that I believe that when people simply look at numbers of hours, they're just seeing the point. And the point that I would like to echo is, is that I believe in excellent service from the sheriff's department. I believe that they care as much as anybody about what happens in this community, and, uh, so that's my attitude going forward with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaiser, do you have any comments?
Well, kind of, it's kind of, um, we want to keep your lives because if he had mentioned that, you know, we can be able to bounce it and take a look at it, and we can adjust it if both sides feel the needs. Give me a little bit more out here, a little bit more out there for certain events or certain times, but at least it's open to, to, uh, they'll give it if you need. We can kind of adjust it a little bit, right?
Yes, and to be clear on an operational standpoint, you call nine one one, there's always an officer who's able to respond at some point. It has to do with the number of hours patrolling here will go down.
Thank you. That was actually my question to clarify for the general public, you will still have twenty-four seven law enforcement access.
Absolutely.
You just may not have been, you know, two blocks away from your front door, uh, because that was a concern that was voiced to me.
Can I put it to you in a way that you kind of, we put it to them? What we're looking for is, we want Andy sitting in the, in the sheriff's station pretty much throughout the day. We want to be visible. We want people to see this our town sheriff, you know, and that's, and then what we're hoping to get is, is Barney on weekends. So we have that second cut. So that's, might not be the proper way. Like he said, we don't want to tell the other officer we're gonna call him Barney, but, uh, but that's kind of what we were looking for. That's kind of what we came to conclusion. I think it's a great for, for what this dude, we squeezed blood out of a grape, I'm telling you. It was, uh, and, and I think it's a good deal for, for what we got.
I, I know it is a huge concern for everyone, and I think this partnered with, thank you both for your, um, I think this partnered with the efforts that have really, the residents have kind of latched onto the neighborhood watch and really pushing forward with that. The disaster planning advisory committee, Chief Pidi and the work he's doing there. I think there's definitely some overlaps where, you know, as neighbors, we do need to also watch over our neighborhoods and call people, call the sheriff's office if something is happening that we think isn't appropriate. Um, you know, legal activity and things like that. Um, one of the comments that was brought up that I would like to just cover really quick is there was an email from a resident about enforcing curfew of the parks, which I believe is different from the curfew of the general public, that the parks close at nine P M. Um, and it was a request to have that inserted into the agreement or discussed as far as if the sheriff's office would be open to checking those parks and making sure people weren't there overnight. Is that something that was discussed or?
That wasn't discussed because it wasn't brought to our attention like this at that time, nor in time to be appreciated.
It is, it fits into the restructuring, which is we're having the committee commit to open communication, um, and clearly the police chief and city manager communicate daily, but, um, the open communication to change things. So to have this language changed, I was given a ninety day estimate admitted through the county to get any of the language changed. So we weren't in a situation to change a lot of the language, and it's a well-written vague memorandum of understanding. So this input and collaborative relationship is already built into the language. So, um,
Something's all that's at that-
It's already in there. Not explicitly you shall enforce that, that city shall direct and-
Yeah. I think I just wanted to bring it up as an example of certain things that may change. Uh, you know, the other thing that I've heard is some people who want to see more enforcement of bicycle laws in the streets. Uh, they're making sure people are wearing helmets, they're obeying the traffic laws, because when you're a bike in the road, you still have to stop at a stop sign, which some cyclists do not, which scares the living daylight out of you of your car. And you almost cream them at nine thirty at night, not like that happens to me in particular. Um, so that's another thing that has been brought up about, you know, maybe more things, seeing what the needs of the city are.
Yeah, this community continuing is gonna be a better vehicle for any concerns of these emails. If they come to the city, they should be forwarded to this committee that's communicating with the sheriff. Uh, I think that the sheriff's department is very open to criticism of law enforcement down there, you know, generally not specific of this neighborhood, this house, but I would like to see more of this. They want that input. And, um, we're trying to create that label through this committee.
Thank you. Uh, is there a thought of bringing in other types of resources like the community resource center to discuss? Because crime isn't just about enforcement, it's about looking at the root of the problem. Has there been a bigger, broader conversation of bringing in some of these social services to address maybe some of the drug issues that are going on? Um, you know, just busting someone for meth isn't necessarily treating the issue itself. There might be social services.
I remember, first we had to bring it to the table and think of a partner and a player, uh, before we can bring in them. We need to establish a relationship with them first, then we can start getting like, you know, step sisters and step brothers, but, uh, just knowing this man at Sheriff Hopey personally, um, I guarantee you they're not gonna have any problem if not help us finding those outreaches and resources. So I cannot say yes, but I guarantee you that that they would be favorable.
Well, actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can just remember the community care team that is being sponsored by the resource center does do that. In fact, on a regular basis, uh, Sheriff Hopey does show up. So that, that is a venue where that can be addressed.
But it has nothing to do with this contract.
Yeah.
Well, we also, we also discussed, um, their willingness to cooperate with, um, community police, I think what they call it, the involvement within our high school, our middle school, you know, gear program. But what we're asking for was these two people that are our officers here, our children go to school in Dunsmere, know them by first name. Our business owner sees them walk the streets and say, hi, hey, how, how are you weekend? Go, well, any concerns about security or, um, death threats? Um, so, um, we did discuss it all. Um, and it kind of all came down to, you know, the, the technical terms as we're moving forward with, but both sides committed to further communication on more regular basis.
Sorry? Thank you. Councilmember Art?
Well, I simply, I mean, I spent all my time trying to curry favor with the chair of the finance committee. Because even before Officer Westin talked to us about the dog bite problem, I feel strongly that we need a full-time protocolist officer. And I think the finance committee, whatever the staff does, the finance committee can present to this council a fully funded position for a code enforcement officer starting July one of this year. And I think it will be a forceful inquiry. I think for the community we're trying to serve. There does need to be a diversion around drug problems, but there also needs to be an integration of the community policing concept. And I think we're well poised to do that for our small community.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or is there a motion that anyone would like to make?
I'm happy to move the contract.
All right. So, uh, there's a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, uh, as it's stated on page thirty-five. So just for the general public, there's a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding slash agreement to provide law enforcement services between the county of Siskiyou and city of Dunsmere from July one, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth of twenty twenty, and authorize mayor and city manager to execute. Is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion under the motion at hand?
None.
Seeing none. All those in favor-
That's a roll call.
Aye.
This one's a roll call.
All right, uh, we will now move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Art?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. Motion carrying the memorandum is adopted. I would like to myself make a motion to continue the ad hoc with the appointment of councilmember Kaiser and councilmember Brian to continue the work and monitoring of the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that. There you go.
There's a second. All right. All those in favor of motioning to continue the ad hoc with the appointment of councilmember Kaiser and Brian to further the MOU?
This could be called a safety committee?
This is ad hoc.
It would just be an ad hoc because it'd be two councilmembers.
Every quarter, every four months, go back to you.
I'm just trying to get the term, a year, two years.
Uh, for the-
In relation to the contract, a year.
And, and the reason is, is again, that we decided not to have a public safety committee or we do have a public safety committee.
Well, this could be called public safety, but it would not be a public committee for public safety.
Correct.
So my understanding is the purpose of this ad hoc would be to continue the monitoring of the memorandum of understanding for as long as it's held. So it would be for the duration of this. There may be need to, there may be a need to reappoint or appoint different individuals as our elections come and go. Um, but as it sits right now, it would be a motion to continue the ad hoc.
Aye.
Just to do the memorandum.
Second.
And there's a second over here. So any other conversation? None? All those in favor of continuing the ad hoc with councilmember Kaiser and Brian to monitor the memorandum of understanding for the duration, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job, Ben.
We'll now move on to our next item of business, which is N B, which is receive report on previous uses of transaction and use proceeds and request for direction regarding processing twenty nineteen, twenty twenty money requests.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, there's some confusion on part of this staff person as to how the transaction and use tax proceeds have been, um, utilized, processed, uh, accounted for in the past. So what we have, staff has provided is a list of what the requests were, a understanding of how the money is collected. It was devoted to people that established this tax on themselves. And what we're asking for this time is a designation from the council as to whether the council wishes to receive and act on the requests for allocations, uh, generally through this process. Again, it's a general fund allocation, so it's back to community promotions that we're talking about allocations from this in the future, not from T U T as a fund. Or whether you wish to return this to the finance committee, which apparently did this process last budget cycle. So that, that's all we're asking at this moment in time. Not that you hear the applications, not that you make a decision at this time. Just how do you wish to proceed to process, um, the applications that have already been received?
So just to clarify, your preferred, do you have a preferred recommendation? Sorry?
Yeah, I had a staff recommendation four years ago, but it got ignored then, so I'm not gonna make it again.
Okay. So my understanding is either the city council as a whole, they hear all of the proposals and decide within those, or we may defer that to finance committee as an advisory role, and then we would just get their final list.
They would recommend that to the council, uh, provide their list of recommendations, which the council could modify and or adopt however it shows.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff related to the B staff report? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment on how we deal with the T U T requests, T U T? Seeing none, we will close public comment and enter into discussion. Councilmember Roy.
Just as far as process goes, um, last year I was very disappointed in the fact that, uh, because it was made by the finance committee, a different finance committee, but the finance committee at the time, that by the time it got to the council, it was who are you gonna take away from if you want to, and give it to somebody else? And it became a zero sum game. And, uh, at the time, what I was concerned about was, uh, money that we were looking to give to the resource center, down to resource center. And, and so I think that, um, you know, in terms of the larger picture, we need to decide how we're gonna address this as far as where the money goes. But I do think it should be something where we work it out together and not as a separate group that then has the ability to lock things into place.
Correct. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, how would we do that?
Councilmember Kaiser.
I mean, I mean, I'm all for it, I'm with you. But how can we do it?
Well, I, I feel that the finance committee, um, doesn't need to do this process. Uh, we would simply save time for council in sense, but you know, part of the recommendation of the finance committee wasn't written here, but that we name it to better represent what legally is. T U T is a tax that goes into the general fund. So the expenditure of money raised that goes into the general fund has to be equally weighed against all the general needs of the city. There's nothing wrong with issuing grants or funding community promotion projects, but it, it has no legal connection with the T U T. Has a tradition of that because these grant programs or these, these fundings, they accelerated after the passage of it. I know it was tied to it for particular reasons, um, in the conversations that took place at that time. But I think that just to better clarify, you know, we should be proud to issue, you know, allocations of funding for valuable community projects, but understand that it's community resource that comes from the general fund. Um, so in light of that, the finance committee has a great deal of things to do with the general fund and weighing against all the options and the benefit, uh, cost benefit analysis. So a recommendation from the finance committee, um, it doesn't, you know, only half really suits it. Because it's an expenditure of general fund dollars, it's appropriate for the finance committee. Because it's an expenditure of general fund dollars, it's appropriate to the Finance Committee. Because it's a project, you know, we're funding particular community promotions. It's the city council's domain because it's all inclusive, every aspect of it. So regardless of whether we keep it or the Finance Committee do the initial screening and test, we should make it an automatic process, it's the same for everyone. There shouldn't be a follow-up. You know, if you had it last year, you should have maybe a second page to fill out as to how you use the funds. And we should have some sort of cost benefit analysis with the understanding that we don't have infinite funds to give. We need to give to the most valuable promotions or, you know, we need to promote the most valuable projects within our community. So either way, a value or beneficial. Beneficial.
Okay.
You know, it has a value on the side if you bring in more money. The other side, of course, would be beneficial to all of our citizens. Both are a great concern, but I just think we need a standard process. It's the same for everyone. It's known, I'm happy to have the Finance Committee do that. But if they do not, I think we should hold the city council's process to the same standard.
Councilmember Deutsch, is this in response to Councilmember Bryan or do you have any thoughts?
No, it's a follow-up question. You know, the question has been, how would we go about doing it? And whether it's done by the Finance Committee, whatever. I think that each one of us can look at this list and decide as a council member representing our community, what we think our values are. And the way that we could translate that into some process would be that we get the list, we know what the numbers are, in a council meeting, each of us, how would we do it? Could sit down and submit what they would give and then work out mathematically how that balances out in terms of how much we have and how much we give. But I think there should be a process where each person could say, this is something important to me and I want to make sure I can support it. And then maybe it doesn't get supported, but at least we have that option.
Well, I completely agree, Councilmember Deutsch. Except for the fact that it isn't a separate fund to be distributed. It's the general fund, which is currently negative 88,000. So what we're going to distribute negative 88,000 is a very different question that has a lot of nuances to where the city spends its funds best for its future prosperity and ability to function in its most basic needs. You know, go back to that law enforcement, investment in things that do generate income is going to be crucial in the next three years. So this is a big conversation to have. And where it's processed isn't so much of great importance to me. The Finance Committee could do it, I recommended that as a member of the committee there. But I do think we need to name it correctly, frame it in our minds as the correct question.
And in fairness, we do have an item to rename it later in this discussion. Councilmember Kaiser, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Bruce, let me see if I can summarize what the two of you just said. Just going to go to the Finance Committee, you guys are going to evaluate. And the ones, pretty much the ones that passed the test there are going to come to the council. And we can take a look at that work, as Bruce says, we can individually score in some way. We're together, and then as a council, we cohesively decide who's going to get what.
But if you start off, I'm sorry, Bruce, but if you start off with the idea that the Finance Committee gives you something and then if you're going to change to it, you have to come up with taking some money away from someplace, then automatically what they have is going to be very persuasive. Last year, when it got down to it, I'd been talking with Stephen Bryan about what we were going to do for the Community Resource Center. When the time came, it was just put in front of you, there was nothing there. What are we going to do? Can't do anything. Where are you going to take it from? And I was locked out. I don't want to do that again.
So what is your result?
What I'm saying is that instead of going to an early committee, we get the paper, we work out a process among ourselves where we come up with a way of evaluating and then we can come up with a balance. To talk to the point, though, of, we have a situation where some of these programs are essential. For instance, the concept of the Chamber of Commerce, $15,000. Well, we can't afford that. What that is, is advertising, you know? And if all you say is, well, the chamber should take care of itself, okay. But do you know that we're going to cut back on $15,000 in advertising? Which is, and those are the kind of things that if you're simply doing it in a committee, you don't get a chance to get out. So I'll leave it at that, I'm passionate about it. But I just think we should work out and not simply say, we're just going to have a budget crisis right now and nobody gets any money because we have to be frugal. Because I think that could do some serious damage to programs and the care about it.
So I'm going to just take a breather. Councilmember Art, do you have any comment to give for the conversation?
Well, I do. And as a member of the Finance Committee, I do support the course of action that this needs committee level attention on two fronts. The first front is the voters and the taxpayers said okay to this tax on the notion that city government would save our library, which was defunded by the county, and our community pool, which is the tradition forever. The good news is the TUT is producing a lot of revenue. We have, in a sense, an embarrassment of riches. I'm looking at Councilmember Kaiser, we have $25,000 in the new budget for the Park and Rec District to keep the pool open. I have no confidence whatsoever that that's the right number. I don't want to do, again, next summer or the summer after, we can't open the pool because the pool is broken. So we need to have, in my view, where I'm used to from the California Legislature, a Finance Committee where all applicants with the detail deemed appropriate by the city make their application for this increasing pool of tax dollars. And the first stop is in the Finance Committee. But if for whatever reason your cause does not prevail, you get a second shot when the city adopts its budget for a year. In essence, you let us out. We got screwed, but we've become far more transparent from the Finance Committee that was closed to the public and had no process. You fill out a one-page application and ask for how much money you want. I think the general Finance Committee wants to move beyond that to a fairer, more transparent. Everybody's insured, we're getting the biggest bang for the tax bucks. And I support that as well.
Really quick, I appreciate the interest in the item, but it is really difficult to focus on the conversations up here when we have the voice of the audience talking and your voice is carried to the front. So I please ask that if you're in the audience and you happen to have a side conversation, to please step out of the group. It is very hard for me to focus on other people up here. So thank you, Councilmember Art, for that. Is there any other discussion on the item?
One last thing. So if we do get to that point after the Finance Committee comes, will I be told that if I want to put something in that isn't in it, I've got to come up with cutting something else?
Well, no, to be clear, the process hasn't been fully adopted by the city council yet. So my vision of it would be the Finance Committee prepares a proposal for how to process these applicants. Same process for everyone.
There has to be the same process for?
Yeah, with staff. And the Finance Committee will prepare that argument process. City Council will adopt the process and maybe make changes to the process as it seems fit. It's not, this is to have more time to discuss these in detail with the full ratification of all the financial movements of the city. That's the only benefit to the Finance Committee doing it. Conversely, we could create a whole nother committee to handle it. You know, the committee that handles the Dunsmere community project grants. But we already have a great many committees. And that committee would have to have detailed knowledge of our finances to understand one important aspect of it. So that's kind of the basis of it. There would be room, we can make the process such if we chose to. The council could decide that the Finance Committee doesn't eliminate, it just prioritizes based on available funds. And everyone who applied should certainly be before the city council. There should be no one who applied to the city council that didn't know that it, I mean, I go with that.
So the discussion right now is not the individual contributions that people make yet, but it's a decision on if the full council would like to hear it or if we would like to defer to the standing committee. So.
Well, just one response. Bruce, I agree with everything you said. The process before didn't pass the occurrence test or the reality test. But what you notice as the TUT produces, the TUT is going to produce $115,000, we estimate, in revenue for the new fiscal year. And the sum of the assets, we said yes to every single one of them, were $84,000. What the Chair keeps emphasizing is we've got a general fund deficit. What does the overall thing look like? And I think that's up to the council.
Absolutely.
I agree.
So having a robust conversation, is there a motion for either to institute the full council as the hearing body or is there a motion to support deferring the hearing body to the Finance Committee?
I move that the Finance Committee come up with a draft process and present it to the council so that we can all decide on it.
For sure.
So essentially?
No, I, I, okay. But I don't understand what you're asking.
Process, we're not talking who pays what.
These days, not the way it was.
But to be clear, another recommendation that is pending in the Finance Committee is putting off these allocations until after the main budget is dealt with because we want that process in place before these funds are given out. So you can begin this year, not next year.
For sure.
So it's not, it'll take some more time perhaps, but you'd just be deferring it to us to come up with a process. And we wouldn't be doing that till the budget's passed.
In case when we find ourselves sitting up here in that one moment and we realize that we lost half our and that somebody got leased out.
No, and I don't think that's what's been proposed. Seeing none.
I apologize for interrupting. What I think for my clarity, which is difficult. What I'm hearing is members want a process before the Finance Committee, but members also want a second process before the city council. That is what is being proposed, as I understand, by the Finance Committee.
Correct.
So they would conduct a public hearing where they're going to take all the input from the applicants. They're going to weigh that, they're going to then make a recommendation to the council where there will be an additional public hearing before the city council where all the applicants have the opportunity to present all their information. Then the council decides. The council may or may not decide to go with the Finance Committee recommendation. Or, you know, that's what it does at that point.
Yes.
Okay.
What he said.
We just elaborated that the Finance Committee is working out that process. And I have that motion, so if you want to say?
Oh, yeah, seconded.
All right, so there's a motion to direct the Finance Committee to draft a process for accepting the proposed community promotion funding, whether we name that or not in I E. So it is a charge for them to draft that process and bring it back to the council. That's the motion on table.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Kaiser found a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the charge of the Finance Committee draft a process for which they will devalue allocations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finance Committee has charged it back. All right.
Good work, everybody.
Fun. That's just my voice. All right, we'll move on to Item 10C. Approval of Agreement and Authorization for City Manager to Execute Emergency Facilities and Land Disagreement for Use of Mock Airport by the United States Department Agriculture Forest Service. City Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Every fire season, the Forestry Service has, from time to time, positioned a helicopter at the airport. The helicopter is not necessarily fighting fires, it's not necessarily involved in suppression of fires in any way. It's there essentially to be available if something happens and it's needed. So it's a backup position. As such, then it parks adjacent to the runway. Those who have airplanes at the airport are still able to access the apron, the runway, and do what they do. While the helicopter is there, we get $200 a day. If for some reason they add an additional helicopter, actually, two additional helicopters, and go to three helicopters at the airport, at which time you're pretty much restricting the use of the airport by anybody else, that's $300 a day. If they call and actually ask us to close the airport so that their operations are the only operation going, we get $750 a day. This is the agreement that was in effect for the last couple of years, these numbers. Prior to that, as you may recall, those who've been on the council for a while, we were getting as little as $70 a day when they essentially interrupt services at the airport. So there were some substantial negotiations by prior staff to get it up to $200 a day. The reason we don't get as much as other airports that they have a contract with is we do not provide the services and make them available to them like other airports do. We do not have a water supply so that they could actually fight fires by filling up their equipment at the airport. And there are other things that, you know, gasoline, we do not provide. So this is a smaller amount than the other airports are getting, but it's also seemingly reasonable. This is the first time they've presented a three-year contract. In the past, it's always been a one-year-at-a-time contract.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff on the item at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment related to the agreement between the USDA Forest Service and City of Dunsmere? Close. Agreement. Seeing none, we'll move into council discussion. Is there any council discussion?
Madam Mayor, let me point out one thing, just a piece of information. One of the things that we've been looking at towards getting the airport sustainable is the idea that another airport has suggested to us. And that is that we go out of our way to come up with things that make it enjoyable or at least agreeable for these people to be up there in the hot and doing nothing but sitting all day long. So the idea of coming up with some kind of a pilot zone, barbecue pit, basketball thing, those are things we're looking at. Because if they say, I want to go to Dunsmere and hang out there instead of some other place, that's extra money in our pocket every day they're up there. So those are some of the things we do want to look at going forward.
Great, thank you. Is there any other comments on the item at hand? Councilmember Kaiser? Councilmember Art?
Well, I would simply comment, this is a good beginning as we move into climate change and mostly the threat from wildfire. And my observation and comment is this doesn't just benefit the community of Dunsmere, it benefits the communities of McLeod and weed.
South Siskiyou County.
And North Dazhasta.
North South Siskiyou. Well, I'm sorry, I'm South Siskiyou County.
No, I would have to comment that, we're getting money. We're getting money for the first time. We're getting $70, now we're getting $750 to take it all day long. We're getting money, so it's a start, it's a good start.
All right.
Are we open for a motion?
Go for it.
I move to approve the three-year emergency facilities and land disagreement for use of the mock airport by the USDA Forestry Service and authorize the city manager to execute.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Kaiser, seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement? No, we're not spending money, we're getting it.
Oh, okay. I just go into a contract, new contract.
No, we're not spending any money. All right, all those in favor of approving the three-year emergency facility and land disagreement for use of the mock airport by the USDA Forest Service and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have an agreement. I know, you're not used to?
We're not used to getting money.
Yeah, I know. It's okay. All right, we'll move on to Item 10D, which is consider and possibly adopt resolution to create the Public Facilities and Services Committee and define committee purposes and parameters. Councilmember Art and Councilmember Kaiser, I believe that you had discussed this item.
The two council members agreed to be part of what is to be a new Brown Act Committee. That was our decision earlier in the year. We met informally and tried to shape what we thought would be priorities for the committee once the council approved it. I take full responsibility for drafting the resolution in the agenda packet. I modeled it on the disaster response resolution that the mayor and I worked on. I modeled it on the Finance Committee resolution that we adopted unanimously. But it does indeed include two public members. Madam Mayor, I'm indifferent as to whether we just talk about it and adopt it at the next meeting, or adopt it tonight, but we do have some high priority issues that the committee needs to work on, including our water quality issues and some other enterprise fund issues, so that's it.
So just to clarify, it said two residents, but it says here three.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just want to clarify that...
And I'm indifferent as to whether it's two or three. It's two for finance?
No, it's five for finance.
Five total for finance.
For the public.
Three, two.
Two.
Because you have, the treasurer is automatically a member.
So I would advise you not to do two residents and two councilmembers because that's an even number and you can't break ties.
This is why I threw it out.
There you go. So...
No fight of ownership, it'll work. And the proposed goals are my own, so, you know, again, I don't want to feel like I'm deceiving anybody, but we adopt the resolution, all Councilmember Kaiser and I tried to do was flesh out what we thought were high priority issues at the time of our meeting, which was down to the public.
Correct. Are there any questions from the council at this moment? Hi, oh, City Manager.
I have two comments. Number one, in there you were suggesting that the city manager and city engineer attend these meetings. There really is no city engineer, so to have somebody come from haste all these meetings would be very expensive, so I would suggest we think about that one.
Could we bump it down to, I remember, first, this structure is in the city stamp, but what would be what I would call the head of public works?
Where there's a public work supervisor, or you could just put in city manager and whatever staff he designates, he or she designates.
That's typically what we do.
For the Finance Committee, we have the city manager and the revenue officer, so to me it would be the animal, on staff.
Well, you know, depending on the exact agenda of the meeting, you might want someone from solid waste, or sewer versus water, depending on what you're working on, if not both.
Yeah, it would be appropriate.
Which is why I'm thinking of you put city manager and designated staff person by the city manager, it would be the appropriate person.
Yeah, although I think that, I kind of like the element of this graph that implies that someone would always be there, not just, because if you already have the power to have anyone who's relevant, by your estimation, show up, but make it part of the tradition to have direct input from someone who's responsible for the operations of the infrastructure.
I think we're going to talk about sidewalks and streets. We have had that kind of staff secure.
Then, I guess a general question on the history of how staff is structured here. Have we ever had a manager of, you know, the three enterprises we typically think of here, and public works?
No.
No.
No, it's my understanding, there's always been one person who's been streets and sidewalks and storm drains, and then you've had one supervisor for water and sewer.
Each, or together?
No, two separately. One person who had water and sewer, who was called the public utilities supervisor, and then you had a public works person who was called the public works supervisor.
So it goes down to two, for that whole round.
That will change significantly with the addition of a grade-three operator, and that organization chart we're working on right now so that we can make a recommendation to.
But if possibly arrive at the point where someone who's paid more and more qualified could oversee great many things in addition to being a grade-three, is that a possibility?
That's always a possibility. The problem of the moment is the nature of the employees we have, those who are allowed to work in water, those who are not, those who are allowed to work in wastewater and don't have great licenses. So that's a complication that I'm dealing with at the moment.
Okay.
The other thing I have on here, one of the goals and objectives, like number two, was to negotiate the new waste hauler contract. I'm hoping that that language is not intended to eliminate staff from that process of the negotiations.
No, it was just a worry for us.
It would probably be discuss instead of negotiate, because I believe we defer negotiations first.
Well, that's kind of how we kind of try to light some fires and the things that need to be brought to light.
So, to negotiate with staff and recommend a new contract for course of action.
Yeah, anyway, we're getting a little bit into discussion, but there's...
That's the end of my comments.
Okay. Is there any other questions at this point?
I kind of, I've got one. Everything's cool, being there, everything's cool, except when we just, as I told you this before, and this makes you do the...
Is it a question or is it a comment? Because we're doing correct questions right now, we haven't had a public comment yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. You can still bring up questions.
Oh, I have to.
But anyway, all right, so we're going to close the question section of this. Is there any public comment on the proposed Public Facilities Committee? Seeing none, I will close the public comment discussion. Councilmember Kaiser.
Okay, page 74, number six. Okay, with me? So that's where it says, including enforcement of the historic district ordinances. We discuss the fact that we can, the recommendations for staffing needs and enforcement options.
Want to remove it?
Well, our hands are tied as far as the enforcement, we can't, we don't have a code enforcement, you and I both know there's people that we want to, well, talk to very sincerely, but I can't make them do it.
I would be happy to move this out of this document and into the future agenda items.
Okay, cool. If you are willing to omit that, then I'll master on this whole thing. That's the only thing, I got a problem with that. We can't enforce, okay? And the rest of it, sir, good job.
Councilwoman Deutsch.
I'd like to say that this is a great idea. I look forward to having people that are looking at sidewalks and the other enterprise funds, so I'm looking forward to what you all can do to make the city better through your efforts here.
She's going to do what I say.
Are there any other comments related to the item at hand?
The only comment I have is that seven, goal seven has some overlap with economic development, so they can coordinate, see how they're doing their work twice.
The effort here is the frustration around commercial buildings like the House of Glass, like the Travelers Hotel, like some of the hotels north of town, that rather than throwing rocks at each other, you know, can we actually, as a committee, help the dialogue around the California Theater, around some of the other buildings that for whatever reason are in the...
Yeah, I was just commenting, it's expanding the concept of infrastructure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with seven, just because if you go to the goals that you stated in this committee, it's dealing with city infrastructure, existing city infrastructure and planning for new replacement facilities and services. So if you're dealing with city infrastructure, why are you getting into abandoned and vacant commercial buildings?
Happy to drop them, you said.
I think, I would be against number seven, just because that's turning into city staff job.
Well, we were kind of...
And I understand what you're trying to do.
We wanted to go ahead and see if there's some kind of incentives that we could offer, acquire, come up with.
Well, I think that's...
And we can do that now.
Well, we would just kind of want to be, you know, deciding how are you, what can we do to help you? Keep them a little pushy on, no one able here to help you, what can we do to...
And I think going to Councilmember Bryan's comment, that's kind of what the Economic Development Committee is set up to do, is their goal is to encourage existing and new businesses to the community, and I think that's maybe money...
Well, somebody's doing it.
What we found in the Finance Committee that needs every single week is you'll see a number of recommendations bubbling up to the council, in the general fund and in the enterprise funds, we're going to have a number of these important issues.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be in this thing, the committee will get to them when we get to them.
Cool.
So we branch, do we branch?
I swore that I did.
Okay. I have an issue.
Oh, for God's sake.
I have a difficulty supporting the committee, and it's not from the work you want to do. I think it's great. I feel as though this committee is really bleeding into the purpose of staff. So, for example, I know we have the, like, we have the words like negotiate, enforce, you know, propose a study of green waste and treatment, I mean, that's a very direct action, that's not really a goal you're supposed to be achieving. I mean, that could maybe be reworded to be, the goal is to investigate green waste, treatment, and recycling programs. That would be the goal, and how that could be worded, but I think a lot of this is sounding like city staff member work.
Well, I think if you just reword it, it might come across a little better, like, even the very first goal, I think is, I mean, the most crucial element of this committee would be, you know, five years is the number of time, and another rate study is always in the works, maybe moving forward with that important task, but it's an assist in implementation of any budget rate study? That's not really something a committee could do in the direct implementation, but monitor or observe implementation and make recommendations concerning it.
Well, I wrote this as a member of the committee that sat for half a year, and, you know, everybody's following their paper from the base classes, there's probably seven conditions for instance. It's the official city policy to get rid of like thirty rate schedules that make no sense.
Yeah, but that's not our job, is what I'm saying.
Whose job is it?
It's city staff's job.
And how do we make sure it's done?
We have a city manager who communicates with us.
But, again, without getting into too many topics, there's no plan of action, there's no assurance that the commitments we made in raising rates will actually be done.
And I think that's our job to stay on top of it and say, what are the steps we're taking, city manager, and the city manager with pay is to do the work to do this. The other thing that's a huge red flag for me is saying, including the hiring of a qualified waste plant operator, it is not our jobs as a standing committee to hire a staff member under the city manager. I think that's the job of city staff to do that. I'm just, and I don't know if it's necessarily, I'm not, I think for me, I have issues with the proposed goals, and not necessarily the committee at this point. I think if the committee is going to add value to the work that staff is doing, then I support it, but as it sits right now, I think it would just be muddying the waters and having councilmembers who are not trained to do very specific topics that we pay city staff to do currently.
But, you know, one of the important aspects of the standard committees, I'd like to be, this beginning of the Finance Committee, I think, credit, grow it into a good institution for Dunsmere, where the committee members are being educated on what's going on in the city by the staff who are paid to run the city. And that knowledge is very important, because five committee members, two of the city councilors, go out amongst the public constituents, their friends, their family, and converse on what the real problems are. Why the sidewalks are starting to be repaired but not fast enough, why we are where we're at and where we're going. So I think that that's a very important function within the community that the committee serves. So if we were to reword the goals and kind of keeping sure that recommendation is all you can do, we don't take action, the only action you can take is to recommend. Just kind of word it that way, I think we could probably move some of these goals to sound more, in line with what you...
Yeah, I'm more than happy for a committee that promises things off to staff and assists them. I'm just very sensitive, and again, I'm a staff member in a different city, and so I'm very sensitive to not undermining staff doing their job.
And that's the point.
Yeah.
Excellent discussion, at least on this side of the views, because the reality is Dunsmere has no code enforcement officer, and we have no full-time city planner. So it would make complete sense, as a professional city planner, that you would push back against, at least what I'm trying to, and I think what Councilmember Bryan is mentioning is, how do we deal with being collectively responsible for ruining the law?
And I think it's a great thing, I think as councilmember, we can continue to ask the question, and you're very good at asking the questions. I think for me, I would like to, I would be supportive of approving the committee tonight, but I would like more staff input into the help that they need as far as what this committee would be doing. And one of the things that we had talked about this committee doing that I didn't see in here is, you know, public facilities like parking lots or moss gray walls, that's not in here. Maybe that is a more perfect goal. So I think I would, my personal stance is that I would be supportive of approving this with a caveat that these are not the goals that are adopted right now.
Let's bring it back. Any way you want to do this, mind your business.
So...
We're joined the suit. We'll bring it, we'll bring it back.
I move to table it until the committee has a chance to come back and give us a secondary take on this.
I would second that myself. So there's a motion to table the option, and so the committee can evaluate the goals and proposal further. I would strongly support that you mark the city staff and see what's actually needed as far as back and forth personally, but I would second that. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand to table? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of tabling item 10D until the proposed two committee, Councilmember Kaiser, Councilmember Ark, bring back a new proposal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So we move into item number 10E, which is discuss Finance Committee recommendation regarding community promotion funding. City staff or Councilmember Bryan, I believe Councilmember Bryan, you brought this up a couple times, I don't know if this is pretty much, you want to...
To just have the, you know, if you approach the concept of TUT grants without knowing the history behind it, it can be quite confusing, because some people treat it as if it's a separate way of raising money dedicated to particular ways of spending. And the reality is, as we discussed, that it's a general fund that the citizens of Dunsmere chose to, the general fund tax chose to impose on all sales to the City of Dunsmere, for the purpose of, legally, officially, for the purpose of generating revenues for the general fund, and all the needs of the city and the community. I'm not proposing that we have any symbolic difference there, just to make it easier for people to understand the true nature of it. I think community promotions is what it is, and we should be proud that we're choosing to fund the promotion of our community in that way, and that's what it was actually named from the beginning. We've just been calling it TUT all this time, and kind of led into how many discussions.
So is there any questions on what's being requested of council at this point? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Is there any public comment on the naming of the fund which grants out monies to organizations in different classes? And we just asked, can you state your name and work?
Carolyn Rivard, 55, 26 Dunsmere Avenue, number 15. I guess I'm confused. You're saying that the TUT monies was already named community promotion funding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so to me, if you give it that name, that's not general fund, that's got a name. So why does that money not go into its own fund instead of the general fund? That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment related to renaming the fund which grants out monies to, or at least the process which grants out funds to community promotion funding?
I just like to clarify that...
So, just really quick, any other public comment? Seeing none, all right, we'll move into discussion, Councilmember Bryan.
All right, I'd like to clarify, it's a great question. It's not as if it's one fund that has a certain amount of money, I'll get into it to do that, it is the general fund, the concept, not the fund, is what we're naming. This idea of granting money for valuable things, beneficial projects in the community is just a concept we're naming, it is not a fund. I think if our kindness is accurate, our words are good, it's elaborate.
And just as a slight further clarification, because everything that was just said was absolutely correct. Prior to the transaction and use tax... Prior to the transaction and use tax being passed, there was a expenditure account in the general fund budget for community promotions. And the council, back in those years, would allocate on an annual basis when they adopted the budget based on requests they had received out of the general fund. And what I'm understanding is that members of the Finance Committee want to go back to that process so that the TUT, when received, goes into its revenue account, which is the general fund. And then if the council wishes to make allocations out of the general fund account, pardon, I'm sorry, community promotions account, which already existed, it would do it that way. There is no tying the revenue source to the expenditure. That's it. And by law, the city is required to do that way. We may not deposit the proceeds of TUT into other than a general fund.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
And just to answer Carolyn a little more directly, the fact that they didn't get two-thirds vote, it was not a special fund, so that means that it does need to go into the general fund. And because of the fact that they tried to do that and failed, both times they got less than two-thirds of the vote, it means that it does go into the general fund, and then after that, we as a council decide what to do with it.
And just for clarification, basically, we could collect TUT and not give it to anyone. We could take it and say, we're going to erect a statue of our founder in the middle of the city, and we have that choice of doing that if we go in favor of it.
Yeah. And that goes back to.
I go against that, by the way.
I know. Yeah, that was just an example.
The fact that we desire and value these programs in our community is important enough to be clarified that it is us choosing to spend our own fund monies, because legally we can't, just explain, spend the TUT on anything but general fund.
Oh, see.
Just to piggyback on that, and members of the council, I guess Dave was the only one who was on the council at the time all this was passed. I went to meetings of the library, friends of the library, I went to Parks and Recreation Committee meetings and other meetings in the community and made that exact statement. If this goes forward as a 50% vote requirement, the money goes into the general fund, and you must rely on the city council to allocate those monies. That was repeated every time this came up before the council, because we had ordinance meeting where that had to be adopted, then there was a designation of when the election was gonna be held, it was stated again there, and it was stated again all the way through the process. Yes, there was advertisements put out by organizations tying the whole thing to particular expenditures, but that was not done by the city, and in fact, the city publicly stated more than once during that entire process that it was up to the city council to make the allocations, their hands were not tied.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other discussion comments on the item at hand? So basically, what is the course tonight is a proposal to basically rename that account line in the expenditures as community promotion funding and better clarify to individuals requesting it that it is not guaranteed. That's my understanding of the idea.
It's not guaranteed, and the TUT, it's gonna take, have a change for all of us because it's what we've been discussing for years, but it's community promotion funding. That's a concept within the city that accurately translates to what's taking place financially. And the TUT is just the sales tax and funding source. It's a.
So it's CPF.
Now on.
CPF. CPF. I have no verbiage or recommendation.
So it's just be a.
But I'm going to call it CPF now on.
So it's a motion to name the account line item, Community Promotion Funding or CPF for short. That's your motion?
Yeah. My motion is to rename it CPF for short and the community funding, community promoting fund.
Not fund.
Not fund. Community Promotion Funding, Account Line Item.
Community Promotion Funding, Account Line Item.
All right. Would you be amicable to adding and clarify with individuals who've gotten consistent funding that it's not necessarily guaranteed or linked directly to the TUT?
Yes.
Okay. Does that help staff clarify a little bit? Is that helpful?
Julie, how you doing over there?
You know, for one, trying to confuse us even more. The Community Promotions Fund already exists.
Okay.
It's not a fund. I'm sorry.
Line item.
A cap.
A cap.
Already exists. So what you're really saying is, next time you go off with allocations, it's not gonna say TUT on it, it's gonna say Community Promotions Fund.
And the biggest possibility is, is going to be city councilors to remember to read us our habits, you know, same concept, but.
So.
I'll second that, whatever it is.
So the motion is to exclude TUT from any future promotion or applications and clarify that it is Community Promotion Funding or CPF.
From the general fund.
Correct. All right. There's a motion and a second. Is there a question on the motion?
Well, just want to be careful, we're about ready to go into a meeting where we have all unanimous decisions. I don't know if we're ready for that as a council.
Peter definitely has a comment. I know that look.
Well, no, I don't understand what we're doing.
So I think we're.
That's after sitting a long time in a lot of Finance Committee meetings. And I'm sure reflecting on councilmembers' duties, the budget, the community center was told there was no money. One of the reasons there was no money was because the city of Dunsborough allocated $40,000 to fix the sidewalk out of that fund, which I thought was totally inappropriate. So our earlier action to recruit all of this back to the Finance Committee, we have no policy whatsoever for the sum of this growing pot of general fund dollars. The library and the pool, obviously, were pre-soled, enhancing our community, but we're just sort of knitting at this point because we chose to make it a lower vote count general fund thing. We have no policies or procedures whatsoever.
So I think what this item intended is, correct me if I'm wrong, is basically get away from some of the language even you use just now where the TUT is just guaranteed to go into the general fund. It is not guaranteed to go to the pool, it's not guaranteed to go to the library. Individuals in the community had hoped that it would go there, but I think we're trying to change some of the language to get people used to the fact that, you know, say one year we want to do sidewalks, the next year we could do a pool resurfacing, the next year we could do a library expansion, and that would be considered part of the community promotion line item, but it's not guaranteed, and it's not something that is a special fund. So I think we're trying. Yeah. Yeah. But.
Is it an annual process, a three-year process?
And I think what we approved previously in item 10B is that we said that we are referring this to the Finance Committee to bring up a process back to us on how to deal with that.
Yeah, and the first step to it is renaming it to reflect how it actually works legally.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any other discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of moving forward with referring to the funding process as the Community Promotion Funding or CPF, and to move away from using TUT on forms and discussions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Hopefully, that will give us a little clarification, because it is, it's gonna be a process.
Ms. Julie, I'll get a video of you soon.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Julie. That's not right for notes. All right. See, there is no other new business. We'll move into item number 11, which is outside council meeting reports. A report from Linda Schreiber, who is the Disaster Planning Advisory Chair, forwarded a brief summary she is not able to be here tonight to discuss, but the committee has been taking a number of different actions, which are listed on page 75 of your packet. I know one of the ordinances, the Hazardous Vegetation Abatement Ordinance, which the committee reviewed, will be going to planning commission for discussion, because it does have some land use policies in it prior to coming to city council. So that's the only thing that's a little bit different in that one. Other than that, is there any other discussion on this to report, councilmember Kaiser?
I approve. We plan to move forward with the disaster furnace website, but need financial commitment from the city, either through chief of dealer or fire department, or through the city Finance Committee Budget Recommendation Process. To be sustainable, we're looking for a four-year financial commitment.
So they have put that to the Finance Committee, which I believe has discussed that in their committee.
It's just not been brought to council yet?
Nope.
Stats on it.
Nope.
Stats on it, and the committee will recommend, I don't believe we're gonna be adopting a four-year financial language, we're just doing yearly budgets currently, but insofar as this year.
They will need a recommendation to us regarding that request.
Correct.
It'll be on a future.
Okay. Okay.
And my issue is with recommendation number two, and this is why the Public Services Committee needs to get going, but what are we gonna do with number two?
So I had a previous discussion with Julie, as well as I have kind of asked Clemens a little bit about what's going on. They are open to allocating, we would basically need funds to cover that. I will double back and see where we're at to see if there's a request that can go to the Finance Committee for consideration, but that was something that we were talking about prior to the city manager search committee getting more involved, and so it was with staff, and it needs to be revisited.
May I? What were you saying? Green waste trash cans or litter trash cans?
No.
Or were established in a green waste place?
No, it would basically be, I believe a couple of years back, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, that Clemens set up at the community center and had just basically a day where people could bring their green waste to them, and they.
That's in the parking lot, but.
Yeah, the, yeah, the parking lot of the community center. And they put it in their bins and basically took it up to Blackview Transport Station for everyone, so people don't have to haul up the hill. Talking to Chief Padilla, just with all of the rain that we've got, it was probably good we didn't do that day in May when we were hopefully gonna do that, because we're gonna have quite a bit of vegetation that's gonna spread up in August, September, that may need to be dealt with. And so we're on track to hopefully arrange something to happen in August, September, depending on the heat and everything like that, so that people can cut their grass, get their bushes down that may be more dryful, and get that out of the way.
So great.
And there's a couple of different plumbing mechanisms coming up with the state to help reverse for that effort.
Howie?
So would it be a green waste program? It would just be probably like a green waste day here in town, or having another green waste reduce cost day up at Blackview. That was the other option that was discussed. So in April, the county paid for some green waste days where instead of fifteen or five bucks, it was five bucks a bid, it was just five bucks a load, and you could bring up your truck with however much wooly or grass material for five bucks. So we may do that as well. I think that was what was being investigated to see, one, what we could afford, and two, that would work best for the community. I think it ended up working out pretty well that we didn't have a day in April, May, with just the rain and weather that we had, but we'll hopefully have one in the more dry season so that people can get that out of the way. Is there any other discussion on the ECA, somewhere? All right, are there any other outside council meetings that anyone would like to discuss?
Well, we should thank Linda for her.
Yeah. Her call around.
Yeah.
They're doing a really nice job. We have another council and staff member comments, anything else that's come up that needs to be brought up?
Wait, where we at?
I have never.
Councilmember staff and comments, and then the consideration, oh, no, go ahead.
Consideration of future agenda items, so.
This is a question.
Okay.
I would like to put on a future and agenda items, green waste. This is about, we gotta stop kicking this can. We've got one, everybody else has got one. And it was brought to my attention by a little old lady that pulled over, watched a pole over in front of my house, and says, you know, you want to raise the water rate and the garbage rate, but yet when we take our green waste to the dump, they charge it on the leg. They charge it on the leg. It's ridiculous.
So do you want to just talk about the item as a whole, or talk about pickup service?
I want to talk about a way to create a green waste in the city of Dunsborough somewhere for our citizens to take green waste to like that community center.
I thought that was your committee that you guys are on, right?
No, we didn't, we didn't approve that yet, so.
No, but I'm just saying, in general, yeah, you're right.
So I'm trying to, we're gonna talk about it.
So we can, so there's a proposal for a future agenda item on green waste overall that would be referred to staff and brought back when they have information to share with us.
Right, on the second one.
Okay.
That, but with the notion, over the years, the answer has been, there's no money, no staff, inappropriate.
Yep. And then, so we will refer it to staff for consideration, and they will bring that up.
Take the measure off.
Is there any other future agenda items? One thing I would like to note, code enforcement, we're waiting for the discussion at Finance Committee for a recommendation. I know you're discussing that. So when, the plan right now is to see the budget through and see if we end up at halftime, full time, no time, and then we'll have an overall discussion of what that conversation, of what code enforcement means to all of us, because that's a very big topic.
Yeah.
So that is gonna be on a future agenda item after the budget is decided. So just want you to know about that. And then the discussion point of a grant writer cast come up, and that would be scheduled for a future agenda item with more information on how that can work.
I think we'll be talking about these at our special meeting on the TUT.
Yeah, we're allowed to talk about the application for their purposes, but the nature of what they do.
That would be.
But it may be tangential to, why would we be choosing to prioritize them or not?
Tangential?
That's a good.
As a, my only item is the revenue we expect to receive from our Mason cannabis industry, the legal, at this point, cultivators of cannabis during the application process. We have a lengthy debate in Finance Committee for our budget that starts July 1. Do we project $1,000 in additional revenue? Do we project something like the 40,000 to 60,000?
And so that can be a discussion that we have when we get to the budget, and we do have a, for the general public, we do have a special meeting scheduled for next Thursday to talk about the preliminary budget, and that can be a discussion in that, which is projected revenues.
And what we need, what I need informationally is, do we have a plan for finalizing the taxation and collection of those revenues? When do we start to get the money?
I believe that's gonna fit into code enforcement, what that means and the nature of it, as part of that general conversation.
So, so I think that's just an item for staff to understand, that information will be requested of you probably next week, Thursday or subsequent discussion item for the budget. Is there any other consideration of future agenda items, anything else? All right. We will now move to our closed session. The city council will now be moving into a closed session without public, related to public employment appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 for Title 5, Title City Manager Position. Do you have to say anything else?
Do you have any public comments?
Oh, does anybody have any public comments related for a closed session before we go into it? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move into closed discussion for closed session. All right, thank you. We will now call ourselves back into open session. The city council gave direction to the city manager, and a formal action was taken, and that was the result of that closed session. There was a question brought up about record keeping. City manager, could you maybe let us know, should we keep our notes for the record at this time, or may we recycle them?
You can take them for this moment in time, but at that point in time, when there's a conclusion to the process, please either bring them in and we'll shred them, or get rid of them somehow. We don't want a Freedom of Information Act at some point in time asking for your comments and stuff, because your comments may not be something that.
You want to. All right. Does that help?
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no other items on the agenda, we will now move to adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
There's been a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, none. All those in favor of adjourning the regular meeting of Thursday, June 6, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.